Hello, everybody. Welcome to the meeting. Hi, Zaida.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I got your email on the trees.
Oh, good. Excellent.
Yeah. If we can go around and introduce each other, starting with Peter.
Pete Grupsek, Springfield Parks.
Tom, Springfield Parks.
Alan McKnight, resident.
Seth Zowinski?
Yep.
City Council, Ward Five, LeVar Click, Bruce.
Great, so. You, uh. Yes. Brian Santanella, Chair of this Committee. And Caterie Walsh is here. Caterie. Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald. How are you? You're on.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Fitzgerald. I am counsel to Representative Carlos Gonzalez.
Fabulous. Um, the reason why I called the meeting today was, um, we had a stunning, uh, uh, bust, if you call it, of drugs in the city of Springfield a few weeks back at a market in Springfield. And there was an enormous amount. And we got Jamie Bruno from the Springfield Police Department. And I know, Jamie, you probably can't get into particulars, but I think we could at least talk what was confiscated. Is that possible? Since that was in the paper?
Yes, Counselor, absolutely.
Yes. And Jamie, that was. Hi, Helen. We have Helen.
Everyone.
Jamie, how much fentanyl was confiscated? That was, that was a large amount.
It was a large amount, uh, Counsel Santanella. Certainly, it was, um, a significant investigation involving state, local, and federal partners with the Springfield Police Department. Aside from that, one of the major components was the removal of firearms that were seized throughout this entire investigation. And so that as well is a significant factor in why you're holding this meeting, which is quite important. And so collectively, I think, uh, what is being discussed is certainly trying to keep the neighborhood safe. Our response to this effort was a direct response of the complaints from the citizens in regards to the illegal activity that was occurring at the Garcia Market and the appliance store that was operating next door. And so after a intensive and, uh, long-term investigation, which was a two-year operation, certainly, we dismantled an organization. And, uh, we were able to get 12,000 grams of heroin and about a pound of fentanyl from the Garcia Market and the Angels Used Appliance Store.
Jamie, how catastrophic could that fentanyl have been on the streets for, say, overdosing?
It could have caused quite a significant amount of overdoses, absolutely. What is also alarming is when you get a large amount of cocaine with the fentanyl, you can cross-contaminate both illegal substances. And when I say cross-contaminate, when you have these two illicit substances with each other, when a person goes to purchase, unfortunately, cocaine, if you cross-contaminate cocaine with fentanyl and a person suspects that they're purchasing just cocaine and they have a contaminated batch of fentanyl, if an individual is unable to sustain that ingestion of fentanyl, you can create an overdose and possibly even an overdose accidental death. And so that, that in itself is a possibility. Alone, the fentanyl is alarming because there are daily overdoses that occur. There was a lot of drug activity that was occurring at these two markets. And so, um, that was the direct response of this whole joint operation.
Oh, Laura, do you have a question?
I think you did, Chair. No, I don't really necessarily have any questions. We had a update on this last week or the week before. Can't remember. But thank you, Lieutenant Bruno, for your updates. And thank you, Springfield Police Department, for doing your due diligence on this, on this bust.
I have a question for Helen. Sure, I could.
Sure.
Um. Do you have the statistics on Springfield for overdoses and deaths?
We do have the data. I don't have it with you, but I will tell you that, um, non-fatal overdoses are still increasing. Fatal overdoses are decreasing. In 2018, as you know, the city of Springfield saw a huge jump as far as fatal overdoses were concerned. That, um, went up during the pandemic. And so we noticed that we saw an increase during the pandemic. And then the numbers in terms of fatal overdoses are decreasing. They're decreasing across the Commonwealth. However, the city of Springfield's overdose, fatal and non-fatal, are still above what they were in 2018 when we began keeping this data. I would also say that, um, fentanyl challenge is, is the number one challenge. But the other one is that some of these, um, fentanyl is being cut with xyluphane, which, as you know, is a horse tranquilizer.
Yeah.
So it's not just the fentanyl. It's what's being used in order to enhance, um, that high or cut that fentanyl. That is also a huge problem for the city of Springfield and probably across, across the Commonwealth. The, um, we are fortunate in the city. Um, the RFP that we put out around opioid overdoses, including fentanyl, really is, uh, we targeted, we're targeting through three neighborhoods right now where we saw the data showed some increases, which were, which are Indian Orchard, Forest Park, and Mason Square. Those three areas, uh, when we put the RFP out around, um, around opioids addiction and where we saw or we've noticed that there were high levels of drug dealing in certain neighborhoods. And that's why our RFP targeted them. So I would just say that, yes, fentanyl is a challenge, but it's also what's being cut. So if we use Narcan, for example, and it's cut with xyluphane, the Narcan will work on the fentanyl, but it will have no effect on those xyluphanes and those other additives that are being added to these, these drugs.
Those other additives can lead to an overdose and death?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And think about it. A horse tranquilizer that's being cut, um, that is being used to cut fentanyl or included in that, that drug is really, absolutely. And, and so when we use the Narcan, again, it's not impacting that xyluphane. It will have an impact with fentanyl, but not with, not with that xyluphane.
Thank you so much. Um, there's also a website that, that I came across. It was called, um, www.cares.org. Is it, do you have that? And that, that has a bunch of places where people can go if they need help. And they have all the links to the different agencies that they can turn to in an emergency. So I think I'd like to throw that out there, that, that, that's a wonderful website. And it's there for people to use.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Counselor Govan has a hand though.
Yes, Counsel Govan.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and, you know, the same thing. I want to thank the Springfield Police Department for being, um, on this. As you all know, my son died from an accidental fentanyl overdose because, uh, they actually put fentanyl in the cocaine that he used. He thought he was just using cocaine, but it was, uh, added fentanyl. And I don't understand the drug dealers nowadays where they're trying to kill their clients, it sounds like. Um, so I'm really glad that this happened. I would like to know, I guess, from the Springfield Police Department, if there are any. And of course, you're not gonna say specifically, but I imagine there might, might be some other places where this kind of activity is happening. I know that I get a lot of calls, um, you know, from reports in Indian Orchard of, um, suspected drug dealing, I guess you could say, because, you know, the people are saying, well, in this store, they're going in and out and it's really, I think they're dealing drugs. And when we call the, you know, the police department, um, I don't know if it gets reported or if it gets investigated. I'm hoping that it does. Um, I know that you guys are really, really busy. But how, I guess, how would you address that? Um, when people call and say things like that?
Is that to Lieutenant?
This is to Lieutenant Bruno. Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. First of all, I'm sorry for the loss of, of your son. And again, just to go back on what I had mentioned previously, when an individual is purchasing a certain type of drug, and I had mentioned cocaine, when it's, again, cross-contaminated with fentanyl, xylazone, or whatever the case may be, you don't know what's going to happen. And, and one loss of life is, is one too many, certainly. Um, we have different measures that we can have reports of suspected places where this activity is, is occurring. Certainly, our text-to-tip is used often by our detectives in the Firearms Investigation Unit. There are the officers like our partners in our C-3 Metro Division that also monitor the text-to-tip. And so as many people as we can get involved within the Springfield Police Department, we try to collaborate with each other to try to address concerns, whether it's the drug dealing in the neighborhoods, drug dealing in convenience stores, or in certain other parts of, of the city. We're trying to address them all. And so the more information that we get from every network that we can get it from, certainly, we're going to try and address it. And so I would suggest the text-to-tip. Our police departments, firearms investigation, phone number, um, we can certainly share that through our media outlets. Uh, that's always a possibility. And we do have a hotline where we have a. Uh, I forgot. We, you can call in, leave a message, and then we certainly respond to those, um, phone calls. And you can certainly call and, and you don't have to leave a, a name and give us any information that you would like for us to follow up with. So certainly, I know sometimes individuals are hesitant to leave a name, but we try to follow up on, on every lead that we possibly can. That's how we get our sources of information, and certainly we follow up.
Thank you, sir. If I may, Mr. Chair, just one more, I guess, comment or question. Um, you know, as, um, you know, a mother who's lost her son to this, this disorder and this specifically fentanyl, um, I'm really glad that the city is focusing on it. And I know that, um, Commissioner Colton Harris does a great job with, you know, keeping the data. You know, my son actually was working in overdose prevention at Tapestry Health. Um, so, you know, this case right here, and that's the reason I decided to join this Health and Human Services Committee meeting, uh, because, you know, this case right here, this is exactly what's happening. You know, people are not, they don't know what they're using, right? They don't know what's going on. Um, even the, the workers who are out there, um, you know, trying to help people, um, they may, you know, have the, uh, the disorder of addiction. I'm not sure with the harm reduction, what they're calling it nowadays. Um, but, you know, they might have the disorder and they might be still dipping and dabbing. And the fear is that they're going to, you know, start putting fentanyl in marijuana, which has happened. Um, and it's, it's just really a dangerous, I think, dangerous time to, to be using any kind of drugs, you know? So I'm hoping that there's a way that we, the city can somehow, um, you know, go back to talking to the young people. I know that we're doing that in Indian Orchard. We got a small grant from the Public Health Institute to talk about gambling and we incorporate, you know, drug use in there. Um, I'm just hoping that we're continuing to talk about it to our kids, to our, you know, our friends, our families, because you never know who's using. Um, and we want everyone to be aware. So thank you, um, Lieutenant, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Zaida. Uh, Lieutenant, just a quick question. Where do you think the, are we a pipeline for fentanyl in Springfield? And where is it coming from?
Certainly, Counselors. I-91 is the, they used to call it the heroin highway. But certainly, now it's being replaced. Heroin has been replaced with fentanyl. Fentanyl is the leading cause of overdoses throughout the nation. Certainly here in the Northeast, it's what's causing overdoses and overdose deaths. So I-91 comes north and south. And so from New York to certainly New England, that is the pipeline for the fentanyl trade. And so we do fall right smack in the middle of that highway. And so we are right in the middle of the 91 corridor. And so we are a pipeline in this, uh, fentanyl crisis where it gets transported from, if we're looking at point south from Florida, I-95 headed northerly into New York. And then from New York, um, comes up to 95 into 91 up to New England. And so, uh, that is the highway that brings the drugs into the Northeast. And then it arrives here into our local community, to the city of Springfield. So, yes.
Lieutenant, does it, does any, any of it come from Canada?
It does, but it's very uncommon. Uh, but certainly, we have had cases. But the majority of our cases do come from, uh, southern portions of the U.S. And, uh, on other times, it does get shipped, uh, from the Caribbean.
Thank you so much. Any other, yeah, you have a question? Yeah. Caterie?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. And thank you for having this meeting and bringing all these issues to our, to our attention. And I want to say to my colleague, Counselor Govan, thank you for sharing that very personal moving story, which I think it's very courageous of you to share. And, and it brings me to a couple of questions. One, and two, what I'm taking from this is a lot of people have no idea what they're getting themselves into. How do we let people know that? And what happens to the people who are arrested? Are there enough penalties to prevent this? Because it sounds very widespread.
Yeah, we're gonna be addressing that. That's the next issue on the drug offenses near schools and playgrounds and also parks. Uh, and that, that's the drug-free zone on the, on the books in Massachusetts. And we're gonna be looking at that. Uh, and we're gonna be discussing that in a few minutes. But you could ask Jamie Bruno what, what can be done? What is being done right now?
And I would also like to know about the ages. Is there an age group that, that is not aware of this particular problem? That perhaps there needs to be some kind of a campaign to let them know how dangerous it is.
So let me just say a couple of things. And thank you, Counselor Walsh, for bringing up that issue. We do have, um, drug checking machines. What does that mean? That Tapestry has a machine so that individuals are bringing in their substances and we're checking them to see what fentanyl is being mixed with. So we're able to have conversations around what we're seeing. And I'm happy to send you the data. So we get that data around what drugs are in, um, in the samples that we are. And, and individuals using substances really do want to know what they're taking. Um, but many times, as we're talking about right here, they don't. Uh, so the drug checking machine is certainly something that we're utilizing to, uh, see what's in these, um, um, substances. Like I mentioned, xyluphane. And we know xyluphane can cause, as horse tranquilizer, it can cause wounds. It really is a very, very disturbing additive. But there are those additives that are being added. To your point, Counsel Walsh, that the individuals do not know what they are ingesting at all or injecting at all.
Thank, thank you.
Victor?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, first of all, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, for calling on this meeting. It's such an important issue. Uh, and I just have a question, and maybe, uh, a question I'll turn to you if, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, so there's different, this is a very complex issue of addiction, particularly fentanyl. I think that Lieutenant Bruno is absolutely correct. Fentanyl has replaced heroin.
Yes.
Now, I can see, I can tell you stories. Uh, some of you know I'm a public servant myself. And I see situations in which people are smoking marijuana that they buy off the streets, but it's been laced. And they didn't know it. And they pass out, and this is extremely dangerous because we know it only takes a little bit of fentanyl to overdose you. And not to think only of the people, but also of police officers who are also exposed to it when they're doing certain seizures. If they get that on the skin, they can themselves also overdose. But the question that I have, it's more on the treatment aspect of it. Because I know there's different school thoughts of this. For years, I have been hearing that there's not enough of treatment beds, detox beds. Uh, would you be able to tell us where we are with that scenario for the detox beds? Because I do, you know, they say, you know, you never know who somebody's gonna hit or pop. And so where are we with the detox beds in the city of Springfield? And, uh, if you can give us a quick overview?
Sure, we would continue to maintain that there are not enough beds in the Western region. I've always talked about a geographical disparity as far as DPH and other entities as far as funding, um, the, uh, Western part of the state. The Bureau of Substance, uh, in, at DPH will tell you that they believe that there are enough beds. We've done the analysis. We know that when those calls came, come in, as you know, and everyone knows, when an individual is ready for treatment, they need to be treated. They need to have access immediately. We cannot say, come back next week. And so, and thank you for asking that question because we still need advocacy in the Western part of the state around treatment beds, um, and treatment opportunities. These three agencies that we funded through the opioid RFP are working together. We have MOUs. We are doing warm handoffs to treatment. But again, Counselor, I do not believe, and I'll take, I do not believe that we have the ability. The only treatment on demand is when we incarcerate individuals. And that is not how we should be treating, uh, our community.
Right, right. Uh, thank you for saying, for, for that answer, Commissioner. I do think that, uh, we are staying to come with a very comprehensive, real plan to address this. Because I know this has been talking, been spoken for years.
Absolutely.
And the reality is that, uh, we still have a crisis out there and it's not getting any better. And so, but thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Tim?
I'm on set. Thanks.
Yes.
Um, Tony, I'm a resident of Springfield for 67 years. And I think Helen.
Are you legal?
I'm six eight. I'm six, I'm six eight this year.
Baby sent me. Oh, go. It's good to see you.
It's good to see you as well. Um, working in that climate for 31 years, working in mental health with people with challenges and working in this, um, detox for the last six and a half years before I retired, there is not enough beds. We, uh, we have people there for seven days, maybe 10 days, that we, if they're comfortable or we have room in this CSS upstairs, that's their next step up. So when we don't, we throw them back out. And my whole problem is, we, people are not gonna be successful because they have a roof over their head. You cannot be successful with this treatment or any treatment if you don't have somewhere to, a roof over your head. And we don't have the beds. We do not have the beds. I worked the whole, uh, detox, and that's a fact. And we have to make sure our treatment's gonna be successful. And we have to earnestly look at this. And I thank you for your questioning. And I'm so glad Helen is, is, keep fighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other questions? Okay, we can go on to the other.
Yeah. I just wanted to say something. See you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Stephen Howard, uh, McKnight Neighborhood. I just want to share something with folks because sometimes you hear discussions going on, but you don't really realize the actual, uh, content of what's being said. So this is from the DA's website, DA.gov. Fentanyl remains the deadliest drug threat facing the country. It is highly addictive synthetic opioid that is 50, that's five zero times more potent than heroin and 100 times more potent than morphine. Just 2 milligrams or 7 ounces of fentanyl is considered a potentially deadly dose. According to the CDC, over 107,000 Americans died of drug poisoning in 2021 with 66% of those deaths involving synthetic opioid-like fentanyl. So now, unless we really understand how potent this, uh, fentanyl is, and as someone said, you know, if, if you just, some of it just got in the skin of an officer, it could be deadly. So I just wanted to add that to the mix. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, we'd like, LeVar and I have spoken on the next part of the, uh, discussion on the, uh, drug-free zones throughout the state of Massachusetts. And, uh, we were comparing it with the other 50 states in the country. And, uh, there's a couple of things that, maybe you can chime in, Jamie, but, uh, part of that, part of our law in Massachusetts is that from the hours of 12:00 midnight to 5:00 in the morning, there's no drug-free zones in Massachusetts. Is that not correct?
That's correct, sir. The, the Massachusetts law for drug-free school and park zones are quite stringent for law enforcement. Um, before this law was amended, the park zones were a two-year minimum mandatory that was attached to a, um, non-posessory offense. So if you were caught with a substantial amount of narcotics like heroin, fentanyl, crack cocaine or cocaine, um, and you were accused or alleged to possess an amount which, um, represented an amount that was suspected of being involved with drug sales or you were caught selling these illicit substances, attached to that would be this drug-free school zone or park zone, which in Massachusetts before was a two-year minimum mandatory. The law changed. They found it to be, uh, too stringent. Uh, our judicial system found it to be. It didn't give discretion to our courts. And so they have reduced it and made it a little bit more stringent for law enforcement. And so now, um, our drug-free school zones are a bit more challenging. In order for you to violate a drug-free school zone, you have to use violence with a weapon. It has to also be, um, alleged that you are having drugs during the, uh, times, again, um, between the daytime hours when a school is in session. Uh, hours when a school is in session, uh, when a head ca- uh, head start or elementary or public school is in session. And it has to occur that this drug activity occur within three hundred feet. Of this school. If you are within a park, all of these other actions also have to occur. And for you to violate it, you have to be one hu- within one hundred feet of a public park or playground. And there are no hour limitations uh for the school zone offense. However, you still have to have a threat of violence or a weapon. Uh, again, involving a felony. And so it's a very difficult offense to charge now. We charge it very rarely, because um, when individuals found out. That it was a bit more. Challenging for law enforcement, well, they moved further away from that three hundred feet uh area. And so.
Jamie, weren't the parks at one time?
It's very difficult to attach it.
Weren't the parks in the schools at one?
It was before. A thousand feet, yes, and now it's changed to three hundred feet.
And a hundred for the park?
In addition, correct. And in addition, we have to have a threat of violence, threat of a firearm. A firearm being used in the commission of this um drug transaction or, or suspected act of drug activity. And so, again, it's, it's very challenging to use this uh, uh, drug-free and school zone violation. And there are no attachments as far as um mandatory sentences or man- minimum mandatory. And so it's to the discretion of the court of how we're going to impose a penalty for, for an arrest.
So are you saying, Jamie, that if somebody's caught dealing fentanyl on a school playground, that that's hard to prosecute?
It's, no, you can still prosecute that, um. But certainly you have to have a, a threat of violence. You, uh, you can't charge it um because it is within the park. But because individuals are savvy in the drug, drug markets, they know not to commit these crimes with their department. And so they step away out of that hundred feet boundary in order to uh commit these crimes.
Thank you.
I think, uh, Chair, um. This for me, uh, is, I, I think we need to look at doing something on, on our, on the Springfield level. Um, for me, um, again, I, that's why we have our lawyers and our teams here. But for me, we're giving the drug dealers, uh, business hours, basically. Uh, you can do business between twelve AM to five PM, and I'm not here to give uh drug dealers. Uh, business hours, here to protect our residents here in the city of Springfield, especially our, our young people and our, and our kids. That attend these parks. Um, you know, right at, you know, right in my neighborhood, at Doug and Academy, we. Uh, one of my kids found some needles out there. So this, this typically sit, it hits home. So these are conversations that we need to have. Um, uh, it's, it's, it's unfortunate. That it seems like this rule, or a lot of our rules, uh, benefit the, the people who are committing the crimes. And then we wonder why, um, you know, we, we have uh, uh, stuff, stuff like this going on in our city. So, uh, uh, to the chair, I, I want to recommend that we work together. Um, Public Safety and Health Human Services, your, 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 uh. Your, uh, what am I missing?
Committee.
Your committee, excuse me, to work together, see if we can uh come up with some solutions to present to our law department. Also, I will add, I did have a conversation with Superintendent Akers, um, and Lieutenant Bruno, he did mention that we would connect as well. Uh, he's all for, was supporting, but obviously it has to make sense with the law department. Uh, he didn't commit uh to, to, to anything, because I didn't have anything. I gave him a brief synopsis of what we're trying to do. Uh, but he did say he's willing to look at it and uh bring uh you in, Lieutenant, to see if we can do something that makes sense. Uh, for the residents here in the city of Springfield, like a home rule petition or, or something to present. But I do believe, uh, if we just sit and do nothing, that, then we're not doing our jobs. I think we need to do something. Uh, if we gotta take buses all the way up to Boston to make some noise, but something has to change. Um, that's my main, my main thing, the three hundred, hundred feet and all that other stuff, if we want to put that in. But this business hours from twelve to five for, for these, for these drug dealers is, is insane to me. So those are my comments, and I thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, and, and we'll put that together and uh have joint meetings with the two committees and start going out and get information. To see if something needs to be done. Uh, Tommy, you, you, you said that something was happening at some of the parks that, uh.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and actually, both chairs of your committees. Um, since our conversation, I've touched base with all of our district leaders. Um, and I would uh invite and encourage um any member of this committee and any member of the city council. Anybody else who wants to uh, to meet me for an early morning walk through any one of our parks, pick one. Because the amount of drug paraphernalia that's prevalent, it's alarming. And certainly some parks are worse than others, uh, particularly the metro region, it's just, it's, it's just eye popping. Of what, what they pick up on a day-to-day basis and what happens. Um, and, and LeVar keenly mentioned that the, the business hour aspect. You know, we've got families entering these parks early, runners are into early, seniors who go for walks and rides and things like that, and sports teams. That, you know, I don't mean to be dramatic, but stepping over these things, these bags, I don't know what's in them, Jamie. Uh, imagining it's fentanyl, cocaine, or heroin, a combination of the three, um, they're everywhere. And we just finished the park renovation at Gordonville recently, and so we're doing the, you know, the uh. The construction aspect of it, and the amount of syringes and things like that, it's just, you fill a truck with it. So, um.
And you, you think, uh, that's obviously happening at after midnight between twelve and five and.
No, it's happening all, all the time, but particularly at night, because we see there, the remnants of that in the morning. Um, so it's, it's sad, it, again, it does prevent, you know, people who want to utilize the parks in, in a positive way.
Mm-hmm.
From, from taking advantage of that, and, and to have to deal with that, it's just not. And so I agree with your, your, the way you're going about this is, is the correct way, uh, Counselor, uh. Click, uh, but also, you know, making a louder, voice louder and make sure the folks in Boston hear. From uh places like Springfield is important. Um, and so, uh, to the extent we can be helpful in that respect, we're, we're happy to do it. But it's a, it's an alarming situation that's going on in Springfield right now, and it's not new, Helen. So we talk to Helen all the time about things like this, and she knows, and it's, and it's, uh, it's sad that we got to this point, but it's a reality.
We could actually use a full-time person just to go around the city parks and pick up needles. We have agencies like Tapestry and New North who are doing the work. But again, we could use one person whose job it was just to go around the city. And pick up drug paraphernalia needles.
And actually, uh, you're right, Helen, actually, we shouldn't have our, our employees trying to pick that up. It should be a special person designated that knows how to pick that stuff up. But I know what you're saying, Tommy, you can't wait, can't leave it there, you can't leave it there, because.
Actually, probably could use two people.
Zaida?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm really glad that we're looking at, you know, ways to mitigate this problem. Um, you know, we, I've been in this field for over thirty years. And um, I remember, and I don't know, Helen Carlton Harris was there at that time. Where I, I'm dating us. Um, but I remember, you know, talking about treatment on demand, like the gentleman um said earlier. There's a lot of ways that we need to address these issues, right? Um, I always look at, and I've always thought about it this way, and I don't know that if anybody ever has. Um, or if they did, uh, nobody's listening, but um, there's a supply and demand issue here, right? Um, drug dealers know that, you know, people are wanting to use drugs. And what I always think about is why don't we think about addressing the demand, right? If we decrease the demand, then the drug dealers won't be able to sell drugs. Um, so, and the, and then the demands, I'm thinking about the social determinants of health, right? People are affected by poverty, racism, um, you know, uh, being unhoused. A lot of these, um, you know, social determinants affect the decisions that they make, you know? And I'm wondering if there's any way, you know, to um, address this issue in a multifaceted way. Not just thinking about the legality of it, which I totally agree with. I think, you know, they should not be selling drugs near a school or in a park. And we should not have alcohol liquor stores across the street from schools either, right? Because that alcohol is a drug. Um, I'm thinking, you know, there's, has to be a way for us to address it at the. Elementary school level, thinking about, you know, families, how families are being affected, especially in the difficult times that we're encountering. You know, with the high cost of everything and the low wages that they're getting. Um, I don't know, there's a way for us to think about. Putting something together. We're getting the opiate, opioid lawsuit money um to the city and, and finding ways to use it. I know that Helen is probably um, has a lot of ideas and all she needs is money. So if we get the money from, you know, the lawsuit that we got, I think doing something like that, because it's true, you know, treatment on demand. People want to get clean, they want to, you know, have better lives than what they're having out there. Um, and what we need to do is be able to provide, um, you know, the treatment when they need it. Because Helen is absolutely right, you know, if someone comes to, for a detox bed today. If there's no bed today, there's not going to be any guarantee that that person is going to be there tomorrow. Maybe because they overdose, or maybe because they started using again, and they're going to be lost until the next time they decide. Or are forced to seek detox. Um, those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Zaida. Anyone else have any comments, Mr. Chair?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I believe I feel my, I, I let the commissioner.
No, I wanted to just address the.
Uh, sure. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, so this issue, uh, as we know, is a multi-layered. Uh, there's like counsel of ours there, and there's social determinants, health, poverty, racism, we name. Um. And so, as we talk, I was thinking to myself, uh, as Director Ash was just saying, the issues of the park. Now, I used to be volunteer partner, years ago, uh, the park, and he's right, the milestone that we saw even back then. Uh, we can, we can go through the list, and it was there, so this is very correct, that there's a lot of uh stuff that happens. But I know situations, and maybe this is more for a, 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 a low department question. People that routinely go to the parks to use drugs and overdose. I don't think they go to overdose, but as a consequence to, which is a drug, potential consequence to overdose. I'm specifically thinking of Appleseed Park. I mean, I've seen people there, that it's just like daily flyers. We need to figure out how to say enough is enough. You're never gonna come to a park to use drugs and overdose. Because then, like, I will see Park, there's a tiny area which, and still, it's still rough, still rough. Beautiful park, spend a lot of money in that park, it looks, it's a gorgeous park. But you see people there, sometimes drinking, sometimes they're shooting up. We can't allow this in our city. Yep, so we need to, I'll have a solution right now to give you. Or maybe, maybe something that, uh, out of this committee, this meeting, we can work with the law department to figure out a way in which we can put limits. I don't know what that limit would look like.
Well, you're on the committee too, so.
Yeah, Public Safety, and I'd be jo- I'm happy to join with, with, uh, you guys. Uh, that we can say, look, we, this is not acceptable, but we also have to have, like I said, the other options. Because I don't think just jailing people is gonna get us out of this problem. It's part of the solution, but it's not also a problem, so.
So, Helen?
Yeah, I just wanted to address, um, Counselor Govan, um, and to let you, well, number one, let me tell you that I worked with your son. An amazing young man. Um, he was working for Tapestry at the time, he's very committed to um, prevention and intervention. So I just wanted to let you know, uh, he, he um, left the legacy of saving lives, so thank you. Our next round of um, RFPs that we put out, Counselor Govan, around the opioid abatement money. Will be many grants dealing with prevention and intervention. What do I mean by that? We're looking at the community centers now, we're looking at family. How do we get that information out there and give some funding? To those organizations so we can keep our young people engaged and not um, on the streets. Looking for alternate uh methods of coping. So I just wanted you to know that that will be the next thing that we, you will see from us, is that we do believe families are critical. And community centers are critical to helping us with this opioid crisis. So thank you for mentioning that.
Yep.
I also want to add as well, I'm, I'm not for just locking people up, let's be clear about that. Uh, I, I work with youth, I work with families, um, but something has to give at some point. Uh, secondly, uh, to a commissioner's point. Uh, we partnered with Health Human Services, we started a youth leadership development program. And we have different topics that we're uh engaging our youth with, and one of them is dealing with fentanyl. And, and uh, those, those drugs that, that happen in, in our city. Uh, so we are being proactive uh through the Sheriff's Department, and also with Health Human Services. And making sure we are having these conversations. And I'll even take it on a little level, in my basketball team, we have huddles. We just don't talk about just basketball, we talk about life skills and staying away from drugs and having different people come into the community. And I'm glad that the commissioner mentioned the community center, because I believe there's a mo- it's a multi-prong. Uh, I may have a, a way of doing things, that's why we have different folks at the table, you may have a different way of doing things. But let's not just, you know, obviously not focus on one thing, that's why we have a team of people here to present and give out ideas and let's implement them. Uh, but I do truly believe our community centers can be a gateway to get this information out, because we have families there and, and more importantly, our young people. So I just wanted to add that to it as well.
And Tommy, that, you could come in there with the public buildings, right, with our training centers? That'd be perfect. And I want to take you up on that tour after the Fourth of July, happy to do it. Uh, any, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, um, just curious, this uh, when Officer Diamond was, or Bruno was mentioning that before. Um, is that a change, all this, you know, less time, or, you know, the, the workhorse hour, the uh. Hours of when you can deal drugs, et cetera?
It changed in two, it changed in two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve had changed. It went from a thousand feet to three hundred feet. Am I wrong, Jamie? It went to three hundred feet and parks were a hundred.
You're absolutely wrong, Counselor, absolutely right. It changed in two twenty twelve.
So, like, I mean, who knows who was around in two thousand twelve when that happened and what was said against it, but. Um, maybe we should be talking to our legislators about changing it back or changing it to, uh.
That's already been mentioned by uh, uh, Counselor Click Bruce, uh, that we're gonna have a, a meeting of the two committees. And perhaps come in with a, a, a home rule petition or something to make those changes.
Wait, what's the other committee?
This one.
Public Safety, yeah, this one, oh, and that, and that other one.
Public Safety and Health Human Services.
Gotcha, alright.
If I might interrupt for one second?
Yes, Jamie.
Change was because in Boston, it was virtually impossible in neighborhoods of color. Not to be within one thousand feet of a school at any point. So it seemed that the uh, distance had been particularly focused. And that was why the change was made from one thousand to three hundred.
Right. And also in Connecticut, Jamie, there was a move uh to change it to three hundred feet. Connecticut's fifteen hundred feet. And they wanted to reduce it to three hundred and a hundred in Connecticut, and it failed the legislature. They kept it at fifteen hundred feet.
Do you know why?
Why the, why they? The legislature, legislature shot it down, uh, a lot of Republicans, I think.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure, right, with all due respect. If that happened in two thousand, what year?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twenty twelve.
Well, two thousand twelve, do you think that things have gotten better? Why would you titrate the timing, titrate the distance? Why would you do that? It's gotten worse. It's gotten worse. And whether there, nobody can come out the house and be in a thousand feet distance. They're selling drugs. I don't care if it was ten feet. Well, our effort should be. Counsel, I mean, with Helen, it should be to move forward, to present something as. Counselor Click said, to keep this together and to move something more meaningful to hold this down. It doesn't get less. You want to make sure it's tighter.
Yes.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to name the school, nor the principal. But for about three years, this principal was just trying to get. The permission to lock a gate that separated a park from the schoolyard. Three years it took him to get that done. The park is a known drug hangout. The principal used to have his people go and remove needles every day. Before the children could be allowed to go into the schoolyard to play. Three years, he finally got it done, right? Now, I have a question for, and Mr. Ash, you know, like, I'm sure you could identify that, right?
But I could speak to that if I could. Yes, I wouldn't aim the school either. But we repeatedly put a lock on that gated area, which was repeatedly cut off every single night. So that wasn't ignored at all, but it was a repeat action. So it's a horrific situation. You're one hundred percent right. But it wasn't ignored, it was just.
To the commissioner. I'm hearing two sets of conversations. People are saying that marijuana is being laced with fentanyl. Then I'm hearing that the fentanyl and marijuana does not increase the potency of marijuana. Could you clarify that, please?
I'm not sure if you could reframe the question for me because of what I hear you, let me tell you what I hear you saying. Is that fentanyl is being, marijuana is being laced with fentanyl, and you're asking if the fentanyl increases. The potency of the marijuana. Is that the question? Then that answer would be yes.
Oh, because I know there's another set of studies that are saying that it doesn't have an impact. You know, so like, I'm getting two sets of different.
I wouldn't try it.
No, he's correct. There is a group out there saying that, and I think it's through the DA's, DA's group, so Commissioner, we'll connect. But he is, I was on a couple of calls where that would mention this. I get what he's saying, but I'll connect, I'll connect you with that.
Our drug checking machine, well, let me, yes, we can talk.
I hear what I was saying. I just want the people who are listening, the public that are listening, to think that. It might be okay to experiment, because I wouldn't try it either, like you say. Even in a situation which the marijuana is laced with fentanyl, shouldn't do that because. You're going to get the fentanyl one way or the other. You could die. You could really die. If you're really into cannabis, that's up to you. If you want to wear a mask and clean yourself, chicken chong, a home, that's fine. I have no objection to the. There's, now we have places where you can go and you can buy marijuana. Don't buy it on the streets because it's dangerous.
Yes, we don't know what you're getting. Great meeting. Any questions in the press?
So are you guys gonna be taking up anything to try and change any legislation when it comes to, you know, what you mentioned with schools and?
Yes, yes, jointly, the joint committees will meet. There'll be six members, I believe, six members, three on each committee. Yeah, we're going to go out and get information, find out what other cities and towns do, Boston, Worcester. And then come back with changes if they're needed.
For any type of like changing laws or just changing regulations?
Well, that would be changing the law.
Okay.
That way, home rule, that's right, through home rule.
Okay. And do you have a timeline for that?
What's that?
Do you have a timeline for that?
Well, we're going to start right away to start the process and see what happens.
This is urgent, so we're looking to get, like, after this meeting, we're looking to get on the ground running because this is serious. This is really serious. Now, we'll need to our young people with all of our residents in the city of Springfield, so we take this serious.
And I was kind of really disturbed to find out the increase, Helen, in Indian Orchard, you said Forest Park and Mason Square.
Those are the three places that we've targeted based on where we see, or the agencies we're working with see drug activity.
Thank you so much.
And I'm sorry, Helen, you said there was an increase in overdoses, is that correct? In those areas or just an increase in drug activity?
We are looking, so those are two things, right? So we're looking at the drug activity. These agencies are looking at where individuals are gathered and what the activity is that's going on. So that's how those three neighborhoods have been identified. So that's one thing. And then there's fatal and non-fatal overdoses. The fatal overdoses have decreased. Non-fatal overdoses are still at a heightened place at this point.
And that's because of the Narcan, right? For most part.
You're talking about non-fatal.
Non-fatal. To save people, they take the Narcan.
That's right.
They don't, so they don't die.
That's right. That's absolutely right. That's why the fadals have decreased. Narcan has had a big impact on that decrease. So thank you for clarifying.
Chair, a quick follow-up, unless you have any press, more questions, I have a follow-up question. Commissioner, would you be able to tell us what's the total number of overdoses last year?
I don't have it with me, but let me commit to getting it out to you sometime, get back to my.
I know it's in thirty thousands, but I'm just going to.
Sorry, one last question. Is there any plans to close down Garcia's Market and the adjacent businesses?
We'll leave that to the law department.
Okay.
And we'll, yeah, we'll leave that to the mayor's office.
Yeah, I would say the mayor did.
Yeah.
Made a hard stance.
Yeah.
So this is legal at this point, yeah.
Okay, okay. I know that we did talk to him. I just don't know if you guys were any discussions about anything further at this point or.
Good question. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.